Well, good morning. This is now ten oh three. Good morning. It's ten oh three in the Brazos County Commissioners Court. And today, September third, twenty twenty five, we are entering a workshop session in reference to the court. Excuse me, the court at one oh one address. At this time, the court would ask that Trevor Lansdowne, our projects management, would come up and start the workshop. Trevor, thank you for being here this morning.
Morning Judge and Commissioners. Trevor Lansdowne, Director of Project Management for the county. Thank y'all for coming this morning. I have some slides that I'm going to present. A lot of it's data that y'all have already seen in some form or another, but want to get it to the group and get this, get a decision made on this in the, in the, in the next, next week or so. So if you have questions, please interrupt me as we go and we can kind of take this down whichever path y'all would like. So, all right.
Trevor.
Hopes if I turn it on.
Just so everybody knows, if you don't mind, we have Judge Hillburn, Jarvis Parsons, and Earl Gray here as well that will give, be given an opportunity to speak and for the court, the commissioners, an opportunity to ask questions as well of those three gentlemen. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So I'm going to start with background on the project, just kind of taking it back. The county acquired the property in twenty one. We then engaged in a feasibility study with Architect Studio at the time to help us plan for what we could do in that existing building. We ran, I want to say, seven or eight different scenarios of departments to, to put into that space, and we weren't, weren't really ever able to make something fit right. And so the nature of that building when it was built, it was a bank and the, the finished floor elevation from floor to floor didn't yield itself. It was really tall ceilings in the bank, and then when the school district came in, they put in a, a lower deck ceiling like we've got in this room. But there wasn't enough room to add, to squeeze two floors in, in between the first and second floor. And so as we got to that point and presented that to the court, the decision was made to demo the building and to start fresh. Yes, ma'am.
Didn't it also have asbestos?
It did.
Restos, asbestos?
Yes, ma'am. It, it, it did. And that was all properly abated through the demolition process. But, and that's not uncommon to find in buildings that were built in that, in that timeline. It's, we, we pretty much see it everywhere when we do remodel. So, yeah, so we, in that, in that timeline, working towards where we're at today, we engaged with Broadus Planning, the Broadus Planning Group to help us out to program the space for the directed departments that came from the court. And so as we worked on that, one of, one of the items that came up is tech stopped moved our traffic signal that used to be at Twenty Sixth Street and Texas Avenue at the courthouse. They bumped it over a block over here to Twenty Seventh Street on this side of the garage, which kind of threw a kink in our ability for, we lost the crosswalk there that made sense from the courthouse to the other side of the street. And so in that, in that same process, that's where the secure passage across Texas Avenue came in to tie into the courthouse. Again, in that same timeline, we demoed the old building while we were soliciting for a construction manager at risk and an architectural and engineering firm to help us with the design. Those awards were in, were made in February to Spoglass Construction and Plain North Architecture, and we're currently in design. Design's going, going very well. And, and again, I mentioned at the time, the direction from the court was to make that building a home, a future home for our public defender's office, our justice of the peace and constable for precinct four and the adult probation department, and as well as to add the elevated walkway as a secure passage. Just a reminder, everybody's seen the site, but just wanted to get a, get a nice picture in here for y'all to see. That was post demo. And then this was the, this was the rough schematic that the civil team for the Broadus Planning Group came up with through the planning endeavor. So, and as you'll see, these are our most recent renderings from the design team. This is a third floor rendering as it stands today, just to give you an idea. And so back to kind of why we're here today is to discuss the, the facts around the idea of a, of a fourth floor for the, for, for that building. You know, the idea of that fourth floor or the ability to flex, to flex additional space into that building isn't, isn't really something that, you know, just came up in the, in the last couple of weeks. It is something that Judge Peters had mentioned over, over a pretty, pretty long period of time, and we had kind of gotten it from the elected officials over at the courthouse too, that, that the future growth was, was needed. And, and that kind of borne itself out through the planning process as well, and we kind of captured that as, you know, the idea when we went into actual design was to meet the, meet the space demands of today, but also into the future, and that we wouldn't do anything in that facility that would limit our ability to adapt or be flexible in the future. And going into, you know, we, we, we talk about growth, and as we move departments over there into that space, I just wanted to kind of give y'all an idea of the amount of growth that we are planning in for, for the four departments that are going over there. The precinct four constable's office, we've got a, a plus three position buffer built into the design as it stands today. And the majority of that is to handle, there, there's an anticipated need for additional staff to handle the security coming into the building. So the tentative plan is to set that up, just like the courthouse, so that no matter which side anybody comes on, they've all kind of gone through the same protocols from a security perspective. The justice of the peace for precinct four, we've got a plus one growth factor built in for them as well, which is almost identical to how we've got the rest of the JP offices set up around the county. The, the setup and design of that will be very similar to what you see elsewhere. The adult probation department has a plus five. They're a large department. They've got fifty nine or sixty employees, and so this gives them a little bit of growth built in. It's an eight percent growth factor. And then the public, lastly, the public defender's office, we've got a plus eleven growth factor for them, and that is from the anticipated expansion of the public defender into a, a regional office that the court had given us direction on. And so now, you know, we, we kind of talk about the courthouse and, and, and the idea behind courts in the courthouse. And so, and again, I know we've discussed this kind of at, at length, but, you know, the current courthouse has several strategic advantages to housing courts. So, you know, a few of those are centered around the detention infrastructure that we have in that building that really the public doesn't get to see because it all happens behind the scenes. We've got a Sallyport that'll accept a bus and vans from the jail to bring inmates over in a secure way. And then from the holding cells in the detention area around that Sallyport, the inmate movement that happens in the basement and the tunnels and the detention elevators, again, it's, it's all something that you wouldn't see, the public wouldn't see, but it, it is a need.
Trevor, can you give me an idea how big that square footage is?
For the.
And those two areas? The Sallyport?
Oh, yeah, the Sallyports.
I mean, just approximate.
Yeah, it's probably two thousand square feet. It's a pretty big Sallyport because it'll take, it'll take two full-size vans, buses to get in there. And then the detention square footage, I'd have to run those numbers. There, there is more of that on the first floor near the Sallyport, and then I want to say there's two or three holding cells basically positioned around every courtroom on, on additional floors. When we remodeled the courthouse, you know, the detention elevator on the east side, it passes through the DA's office. So there is no, there is no out, outlet from that, from the DA's office, but there could be in the future. We can add doors and, and floors to the cars. And then the same thing on the first floor. So those, those elevators pass through the first floor to land on two and four for the courts as it stands today. And then again, obviously, like we mentioned, we've got the security screening area that we just remodeled in the courthouse about a year ago for people and, and their baggage as they come, come in the courthouse. And, and, you know, just the, the courthouse as it stands today, it does have one major disadvantage in that that's adding additional square footage to the footprint that we've already got in that building would be insanely expensive and also very hard to accomplish. The, the nature of the construction of that building doesn't quite lend itself to us being able to, you know, stack floors or add on to it. And so it kind of is what it is today. And then kind of moving forward, as we, as we were planning this building, you know, it, it's sort of centered around some very rough kind of penciled-in ideas for what the future of the courthouse might look like. And so one of those being to relocate the DA's office over to the current adult probation building on the east side of the garage as they continue to grow. That space will obviously need a remodel to adapt itself for their operations, and we do have some funds in the budget for this coming fiscal year. I'm sorry. It says FY twenty five. It's actually FY twenty six. The years all rolled together at this point. There is some, there's, there are dollars in the FY twenty six budget to plan out that space for the DA's office. Another request that we had gotten from the district judges at the time was to get the four seventy second court up on the fourth floor with the other three district courts. The award of the four seventy seconds of the county came a little bit quicker than I think we all thought, and luckily we did have the spare, or the old eighty-fifth, the ceremonial courtroom to roll Judge Wise and his staff into at the time. But again, the long-term goal would be to get the district courts all up on the same floor. And that would be, they would, they would move into, again, it would need to be a, a remodeled or readapted space, but it would be the space that the JP and the constable would be vacating to move over to the, the one oh one building. And then again, kind of re-establishing the old eighty-fifth there is the ceremonial or spare courtroom. I think at this point, every judge or court has, has had to utilize that space for one reason or another, whether we had a HVAC failure or technology issues that, that they couldn't have court. I know that, you know, the DA's office has used it, you know, for, for other things as well, and so, yeah, we, we would be able to get that back. And then, you know, another item that Judge Peters had, had talked to the district judges about a lot was, was for a potential century jury pool location on that third floor. We, when we pull juries for multiple courts on the same day, we do end up with a lot of folks in those hallways. I had some pictures. Did I lose them? So here's a couple of reference photos that I've gotten from some judges with, that are trying to bring it to our attention. But as you can see, when we're pulling juries on, on the same day for multiple courts, it gets really congested in those areas, and we don't have enough seating for all the, for all the potential jurors in those spaces. And so, you know, the judges can probably speak better to the idea of a central jury selection area, but just to give you an idea of where we're at. And then just kind of going back to just some utilization schematics of the courthouse as it stands today. This, there, there could be a few office changes to this because this is a couple of months old, but just to kind of give you an idea, the red is, is spaces that are in use or occupied. The green spaces are open spaces. And so first floor, we've got the district clerk, county attorney, who's got a couple of open offices. We've got collections, family violence, and the county clerk's office, as well as a, and again, a fairly robust detention area down there on that first floor. And this is, this is pre-construction. I kind of wanted to give a, you know, a prior to the annex building and then a post-annex building kind of look at the floor plans. So the second floor, again, it's, it is full. We've got six courts on the second floor, CCL one and two, and then the three associate courts, as well as the four seventy second down there where the old eighty-fifth was. And then in a, in a post-construction or a future kind of planning, look at this, you know, if, when we, when we relocate the four seventy second up to the, the fourth floor, we'll be able to grab that old eighty-fifth ceremonial courtroom back to act as a, as a spillover or spare. On the third floor, as it stands today, again, it's full. We've got the, the DA with the, with the majority of that third floor. We have the, and then we've also got the child protection, child support courts and the supporting OAG offices down there for, for them as well. We had a, we, the greens, the green block that you see was a shell space that was left over from the courthouse remodel. We looked to potentially adapt that space for the four seventy second when we knew that it was coming on. We actually engaged with an architect and got in there and took a look, and you can see those four columns that are kind of sticking out in the middle of that floor plan, and there wasn't a good way to set that courtroom up where there weren't going to be line-of-sight issues because of those, because of those column lines. And so there it stayed, and, and the plan again was to come up with a better solution in the future to make that space work. And in discussing making that space work, we're actually going to finish the build-out of that space to support the displaced folks from the district attorney's office that are going to have to move when we bring the secure passage over and we tie that in. It's going to happen kind of right there. It's going to come in right about here, and so we're going to lose this, lose this row offices for the DA, which is their victim assistance area that they've got over here, and so we're going to, we're going to do a, a shell build-out of this space here to accommodate those folks, both during construction and then into the future until we relocate the DA. The potential there is also, or the idea would be that we could also potentially leverage that space if we need to relocate any departments from this building when we get into construction over here as well. It's, it's got a, it's a big enough space that I think we can, we can be flexible and make it work for, you know, for everybody. And so looking again, even more forward into kind of where we're talking about, if we're able to, if we're able to move the DA's office over to the probation building, the green space that you see would become usable. And it's, it's a big chunk of square foot. Currently today, they use about seventeen thousand square feet, and so we would capture almost all of that back, less the secure passage space, which will, which will tie in right there. And then we've got the fourth floor, and again, today, fourth floor is full with the three existing district courts, the JP and the constable, and then the law library plus detention kind of down here on the southwest corner. And again, JP constable move over, and then we've got the space there to bring the four seventy second back up after, after a remodel or a readaption of that space.
So where would you put the, where would you, what would be the jurors, if you were to redo it? Where would you put the jurors that are waiting? Because I've been through there. I was there for a meeting the other day, and I mean, it was just like running a gauntlet, trying to get through there for a meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think the, I think you'd look at the third floor first. I, I think that's, that's where we would be able to capture the most square footage by shifting the DA over. And then exactly what that looks like, I'm not sure today.
So you're saying juror holding would be on the third floor, but they, if, if they were being selected or having to go up? Because I've been on. Because I've been on, never gotten chosen, but I've been for jury duty. So, that means that as they're, you know, vetting you for selection, you would have to go up and down the stairs?
Yes. Yeah, up for court, down for court, and then maybe in the future, if we do end up with additional courtrooms there on the third floor, then just down the hall.
Okay. But, at least they get you out of the hallway.
It does. It does. It cuts congestion down on those, in those corridors. And again, so, kind of the, you know, the whole idea about this was kind of what we were looking at from a growth perspective, and so, I just wanted to kind of pull some statistics, or as much as we could, to try to kind of paint a picture of what, of what the growth might look like for the county. And so, starting with our population, you know, from, in the last 20 years, we've had about a 29% growth factor to the county based on population at a rough growth rate of a 1.5% per year. And then, kind of tying that back to county full-time employees, over that same time period, or actually, this isn't quite as far back, it was as far back as the, as I could get from the total budget numbers, you know, we've grown as a, we've added 209 employees over that, over the last 15 years, which is a 21% growth at 1.6% per year. And this is where you can dive deeper into the numbers and start to look at some additional statistics. And so, you know, kind of, kind of running and with the, you know, trying to kind of figure out, what does that number look like? What do comparable counties look like? And one of the stats that kind of came up as I was doing some research was, how many county employees do you have per 1,000 residents? And so, we are up here at this 4.03 number, down from 4.08 back in 2010, and I just wanted to list some, you know, some comparable-sized counties, just to kind of give you an idea of that number. It's, it's hard to, you know, I don't know that there's a huge takeaway here. We're sort of in that middle range. I do think that there, you know, there's probably a bell curve to this where, as you, as you grow in size, at some point, you do get big enough where you start to see an efficiency and what that number looks like, and that number kind of starts to crawl down. Like, you can see with Williamson County, they've got the lowest number on here, but they are the largest as well, so. And then, an even deeper dive, so, trying to kind of figure out, again, future growth for courts and what that looks like, and running, running comparable numbers to, you know, counties a little larger than us, a little smaller than us, and trying to kind of figure out where we fit in and what the future might look like. And so, how many district courts, how many county courts do these, do these counties have, and what are their populations? And, you know, it does, you know, based on the trends and what you see, we are on kind of the smaller side of the number of courts that we've got for our population. Let me jump to, and so, looking forward, trying to project court growth, you start to look at kind of peer benchmarking for counties and kind of where that growth factor comes in. And very roughly, it kind of comes out, shaken out to those five high, five low, that you roughly have about two district courts per 100,000 residents and one county court per 100,000 residents, just based on those averages. And so, when you try to map that out or try to put a table to it to understand where we might see in a timeline that we would, we would be looking at bringing those courts on, kind of running three different growth models here, kind of a, you know, the 1.3 is the recent growth from the last five years, but here's a slower growth and a faster growth model as well, just for reference. And so, looking at that 1.3, again, based on the averages for those counties that are, that are close in that their peers, you know, it's, there's a fifth district court next, next year. And then, looking at an additional county court in the next 10, another district court in the next 15, and then another county court again in about, you know, 20, 25. And so, those are the trends that we're trying to just kind of discuss and trying to plan around as we kind of talk about space, fourth floor, and all of those things. And so, backing up to the, the other departments that are in the courthouse that aren't necessarily courts. And so, talking about growth in those departments and the potential for those departments to eventually outgrow the space that they're in, and us needing to either find a new location for those departments, but at the same time freeing up space in the courthouse. And so, going back to 2017, again, the last, so this is over the last eight years, the county clerk, county clerk's office has seen a 46% growth increase, the district clerk a 21%. The county attorney, obviously, the outlier there, they actually had a 20% decline in their staff over that same time period. And then, the DA's office at 25%, and then the collections department. It's 17% growth. It's only one employee, but it's 17% growth. And then, you know, the whole other piece of this is new departments, right? So, not, not just growth within the existing departments today, but potential new departments that come online, and these are sort of spaces and departments that we've had to soak up and add space for, including the family law associate court. The guardianship office has grown, and they, they are maxed out on space today. We've got jury services as sort of its own standalone department under the, under the district clerk, but they're in their own space. And then, we added the 472nd Court, and then, obviously, we added the public defender's office as well. And so, as new departments come online, I don't know what the next department might be, but again, just kind of thinking ahead about where we might, where we might place them. All right.
Trevor, thank you.
Got through it, absolutely.
Commissioners, any questions right off the bat? Bentley? Commissioner Nettles?
Great work. Thanks for the effort to put into this.
Absolutely.
I did have a couple of questions. On the fourth floor, what is the square footage that that's going to give us additional capability of?
In the new building?
Yes.
That'll be an additional 20,000 square feet.
Okay. And then, I understand this also involves an additional floor to the parking garage?
Yes, sir.
How many additional spaces will that give us?
65 to 70. We're about 223 in the current design of three floors, and we get up to that 280, 285 number with the added floor.
Okay.
Because we are going to lose the parking on the street side of Texas Avenue and William Joe Bryant, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That is going to take that, that current-
So, between, yes, ma'am. So, between our project for the new building, which we're going to have to add some structural support for that secure passage in that area, and then TechDOT's also got a project, a beautification project downtown to establish shared-use paths and sidewalks, kind of all up and down Texas Avenue. And so, one of those, currently, the, about half of the spaces, half of each space along that bumps up to Texas Avenue is encroaching into TechDOT right-of-way. And so, they're coming back in as part of that project and re-establishing that right-of-way, and so, we're kind of getting shoved back. We will lose all those spots.
Can you go to the slide with the rendering with the-
Yes, I don't know if it shows, but I will.
We can be, everybody can be clear where those spots are being vacated. Go back one. So, where the skybridge comes, all those parking spots where you have the proposed pedestrian bridge dot, all those spots underneath that are gone, correct?
Yes, sir. And so, the plan, as we got into this building, was we knew, we knew that we were going to lose those spaces, and it's good that we knew when we did. And so, the, the current plan is for the elected officials and folks that park in that secure lot, we're going to give them the ability to park over into the new garage and be able to walk securely over to the, over to the courthouse if they choose to do so.
So, what that shows is how landlocked the courthouse is.
Yes.
There's nowhere to go.
Yeah, there's, there's maybe something we could do in that space in the future, but again, with the new right-of-ways, we don't really know exactly where that line's going to be and how much we can actually, we could actually leverage that, the rest of what that space would leave after that.
And so, structurally, you really couldn't even go up with the courthouse.
No, ma'am.
And so, it would be easier in terms of cost and planning now to structurally make sure that 101 is structurally, we're able to go up while we can, because the courthouse will really never be able to go up, reconfigure it. I know some counties have done that, have, have gone in and, you know, just completely redid their whole courthouse.
Yeah, you really have to plan for that when you build it. And so, that was when we were discussing it with our design team and construction manager, that was one of the items that we brought up, was like, okay, if we're, if we know we want to grow, or we know we think we need to grow in the future, do we beef up the structure to be stacked on and the, or, or is it more economical to just go ahead and head and add a shell space like what we're discussing today? And everyone was in 100% agreement that the shell space made more economic sense, not, not factoring in the disruption to the, the, just the day-to-day-
Operation of our, of what we have to do.
In that building when the, when the time comes, yeah.
Gosh, golly.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Brown.
Commissioner Nettles, did we, did I answer that? I, I, I'm trying to go back and remember what your, what your question was, or if there was a question. Maybe we just moved on.
I think you answered it.
Okay, all right. Good deal.
Yeah, Commissioner Brown.
Trevor-
Yes, sir.
A couple of weeks ago, when we were talking about all the additional square footage we were going to have with the, the old sanctuary when that's redone, you talked about all the different offices from the second floor and the third floor that were going to move down there, but you never said anything about what's going to go into those second floor and third floor offices that are going to be vacated.
So, in that remodel, I didn't, I didn't include those in the slides here just because this was specifically fourth floor, but I'm more than happy to-
And let's make that point clear. This is, the fourth floor, 101 is only about the court systems-
Correct.
-that need to be together. That has nothing to do with our day-to-day county business, correct, and annex?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But, what I'm getting at is, besides all that opening up, we have this opening up. And I talked to two judges today, both Judge Matsky and Judge Brantley, and they both said that they were pleased with, with the space they have, but they also talked about this being available as another courtroom, and all we'd have to do is, is have, you know, have security like we have across the street.
Yeah, we, so, if we were to take any other space that we've got and adapt it to, to accept a court that brings, that is taking inmates over from the jail, we would have to introduce that infrastructure. There are jail standards that apply to the detention areas at the jail that we would have to-
Create here.
We'd have to create those here, and that's, I'm not sure, we'd get a little creative with it, which we can do, but I'm not quite sure what that would look like, at least just trying to come off the cuff with it today.
The level of security that we, the enhanced security that would be needed for a courthouse.
Yes, yes, ma'am. So, it's, yes, it's, so, it's the inmate, inmate transport, inmate traffic, inmate movement, plus then the security for the building itself.
Holding cell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Collins, thoughts, prayers?
It's that, it's that same equation. Clearly, as the population of the county grows and the court services to the county needed to expand, we'll need space. Clearly, it's cheaper to build a fourth floor when you're building a building and plan for it structurally and everything else. We are responsible for safety of inmates and everyone else when they're in our buildings, thus the pedestrian crossing there. It's a lot to consider.
And I think when we, when we were doing this discussion, they was talking about everything needs to be courthouse-adjacent. This is not courthouse-adjacent, and what it would take to configure to create this into a courtroom, the cost of that would need to be considered.
Yes, ma'am.
And would it be a long-term plan to make this a courtroom in terms of the administrative function of this building? And would it be better to put some non-court-related functions, keep this non-court functioned?
Well, it would certainly cost less than $10 million to create a court here, so, that's where I was going.
But, that's short, that's short-term thinking, I'm not-
It would definitely cost less than $10 million. You're, you're not wrong. We, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have as much square footage. We did look at programming some courtroom space in that new building when we were going through the planning process, but again, it always came back to the additional hardened infrastructure required to get the inmates there, and it ended up kind of blowing the budget that we had, that we had already, that we'd already planned on for the project, and that's why it got peeled back to an administrative building as opposed to courts and, again, the, with the detention infrastructure.
Commissioners, any questions for Trevor now, or would you like to call Judge Hillburn, District Attorney Parsons, or County Attorney Earl Gray? Who would you like to hear from first? Is that the point of the presentation we're at?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioners can't decide. Judge, it looks like you're at the front of the line. Judge David Hillburn, thank you for being here today.
Thank you all very much. David Hillburn, Judge of the 361st District Court. Thank you for having me and thank you for having this workshop. This issue is something that I think the decision-making this court's making right now is kind of a pivotal decision for the future of the justice system in Brazos County. We'll just hand it out to you, it kind of tells you the passion I have towards this project. This is an email I wrote August 4th of '21, going back to why the county should purchase that land to begin with, and it's for this very reason that we need future expansion. Personally, I've got a lot of background that I'd be happy to explain, it'll take too long to go into too much depth, but, you know, as a prosecutor in Harris County, I started when they had just opened their new criminal justice center. They did build some floors in that were shells for future expansion. That's been 25 years ago that that was there. They're now full, and they're now busting at the seams in that building. When I was in the DA's office with Jarvis and Baker, I left in '09. At that time, there were two prosecutors per court, one in juvenile, one in appeals. Just talking about lawyers, there's eight new lawyers for those specific areas that weren't there 15 years ago, and for those positions, there's zero new courts. So, when we talk about adding a court, adding the personnel with the DA's office to properly run that court and to help facilitate the need for the court is to what? Prosecute and, and I'll look into the criminal aspect, but civil too, but from a criminal aspect, to prosecute the cases to get them out of Sheriff Digg's jail, right? It's, it's, it all dovetails together, and whether we're going to keep them in jail longer and spend more money at the jail and expand the jail because we don't have enough room to keep them all, or we expand the court system so that we have enough courts to move faster through the system, which I think is best for everybody, victims included, defendants included. You saw the numbers on where we're at with other counties, just a comparison aspect, but if you take the third floor, if the DA's office were to be removed, you could really double the fourth floor footprint in the court, current courthouse and drop it down to the third floor. Now, you have space for three new courts in that same building to make that the courthouse as you expand down the road. I think the question for this court is, the future and where do we see this future is? How long do we expect that 101 building to be? Is that a 10-year building? Is it a 20-year building? Is it a 50-year building? If we're going to make it a 10-year building, it, what we're building is great. If we're looking for what we're going to do in the future, we've got to have the ability to expand, and that's just based on the data you see there. The frustration in the court system is, the pressure that builds has to go somewhere. And so, as, as the DA's office grows, you add another court, you add new DA's, the current facilities they have has to be bigger. So, the court system in the courthouse is okay, we're fine there. Now, you add the support staff, the investigators, the victim assistance people. With the county attorney's office, you add a county court number three, you're adding new prosecutors in their office, you're adding new probation officers. Why? Because now you potentially have more people on probation as the county grows. You have a bond supervision office that grows because of every step along the way, there's pushing and pressure and growth. The unfortunate part for you is you, this court, is hamstrung by the decisions made 15 years ago by a previous court. If you ask anyone in the courthouse, and I don't, maybe I should take that back, I think, if you talk to them in the courthouse, they will tell you that the idea 15 years ago was not to renovate that space. It was to build a new justice center or a government center out by the jail where you could get land for future expansion as you grow over the years. The, this, the previous court, municipal court at that time, decided, let's renovate the space we have, and when they did that and finished that in '18, the plans made in '07, '08, and when they finished in '18, Mr. Parsons' office was already full. By the time they finished that project, their office was already full, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think y'all are kind of busting at the seams at this point, correct? And that's, the reality is, y'all have to deal with the decision made by that court. And so, now, we have a position, if the decision is made to keep this at three floors, you are hamstringing the next court in 15 years, because they're going to have the same problems and the same questions and the same issues that y'all face today. And if we don't address it the right way and plan for the future growth of the judicial system, at the end of the day, we'll deal with whatever y'all tell us. We- at the end of the day, we'll deal with whatever y'all tell us. We, it will run. But do you wanna put the money in the ability to run it efficiently? Or do we want to put Band-Aids everywhere and make it work, just to make it, put a round peg in a square hole? And with that, I'll answer questions y'all have.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, I'll start at the right and we'll work this way. Commissioner Nettles.
No questions.
Mr. Conderla.
No questions. Thanks for that input and that perspective, Judge.
Commissioner Brown.
No questions. You dressed up nice today.
I didn't shave. Commissioner Watson.
No, I don't have any questions, but you're just kind of reinforcing my beliefs that we need to be thinking about, and I've, in my other life, I've moved, we moved in, we built a building, and by the time we moved in it, we'd already outgrown it. And so I think we've got to be forward-thinking, because I've also heard of previous decisions that are having long-lasting impact and not necessarily, it was like no, we had no vision, no long-term thinking in terms of what is Brazos County gonna look like in the next 10, 15, 20 years? And so I think what you're saying is reinforcing my belief that we need to be proactive in terms of, and I applaud Judge Peters for thinking that, that in terms of preparation for long-term growth, because I think he also, like you, remembers previous decisions that were made and the impact that that had, and so he has tried to be forward-thinking, which I also support. So, thank you for your comments on terms of what I hope, the decisions I hope that we'll make here today.
Well, Commissioner Brandon, I wanted to address something you'd mentioned too, and there may be space in the county to put departments. The issue I see is consolidating departments with their function.
Right.
Because, as mentioned before, yes, you could put a court here, adding in, paying the money to put a facility to hold the prisoners here, and it would be less than $10 million. How long does that last? Because you still gotta add in additional lawyers and security and additional staff, the support function of the court system. And that's the, it's frustrating. Look, I don't envy you guys at all. These are tough decisions. And in only, yesterday, my 14-year-old, and I went to the orthodontist, for her, not for me, and I had to put money down on a beautification project that's her mouth. And I had, the next budget, the increase in pay hadn't even come through yet, and they're ready to pay that money down. But it's for her future. It's for her future. And so it's a long-range thinking that's frustrating, that is painful, and I don't envy y'all, but it's the right thing to do.
Before I ask Judge Hillburn one question, any further questions? So you touched on it there, just the issues of what we would have to do to remodel here, but more importantly, what issues would we have with courts in three, four separate different locations? Not only with security, detention, but with experts, attorneys, trying to run and navigate three or four buildings in a timely manner, when we start moving courts in a faster manner? I mean, that's gonna put attorneys running around like chickens with their heads cut off, is that correct?
Absolutely right. And that goes back to my Harris County experience, because before they built that criminal justice center, they had a DA office building, which was separate. However, because the DA's office had gotten so big, they had different facilities, Grand Jury was in a separate building in downtown. But every, they had the criminal courthouse, which was a block away from the DA's building. But you had at least three other buildings that had criminal courts around downtown. And so about 8:25 every morning, you'd see prosecutors wheeling their dollies all over the county, all over downtown Houston, getting to their courts, and you'd see defense attorneys running between the buildings all morning, because they had to go to different places in different courts. And having the ability to have everything under one roof, or under two roofs even, support staff-wise, and only have to go to two places as opposed to going to four, it's, again, it goes back to efficiency. And the pain of paying for the efficiency and the outlook of the future efficiency, it's just that forethought that y'all are doing, working through that process.
So you have the security of the defendant, security of the people in the building, and the security of everybody working in the building, going back and forth, not having to manage the streets, the light cycles, and everything else.
Absolutely. And it rains in here.
Does it rain?
Well, not now, but.
Is it hot?
That it absolutely is. That's why court shuts at 8:30. We try and get you in before it gets too hot.
Well, we were very fortunate to have Judge Hawthorne come over and swear me in and run across in his black robe, and I think he had to go home and shower.
Anything else?
Commissioners, any further questions? David, Judge Hillburn, thank you so much.
Thank y'all. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Judge.
County Attorney Earl Gray.
Morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners, I appreciate you allowing me a few moments to speak to you all. Speaking of background, I actually have a little bit of background in this kinda stuff. Actually worked for Walmart for 10 years in the home office, under building construction and store management of all the supercenters. And so I would not only be in North America, but Mexico, Germany, and some other areas. Also worked in the international division. What we learned in Walmart, and again, that's the number-one retailer in the world, is that it makes more sense, as Judge Hillburn just indicated, to think ahead. You know, it's very difficult when you expand an existing project. What we found in Walmart, at least many years ago, that it was much more cost-effective to have a new building, move into that new building as opposed to expanding an existing complex. And so that's where I'm kinda touching on expanding this new building and potentially adding this fourth floor. And I just wanted to, you know, we're, my office is here to help any way we can, and in fact, we'd even be willing to move over there permanently, instead of just having this as a shell on the fourth floor, move us over there outright. You know, we're not gonna have a problem walking back and forth to the courthouse. I agree, when it comes to courthouse security, we really do need all the courts in one building. You know, Sally Port and some of these other things are pretty involved when you have to do this the right way. I mean, you have to go into this with a plan and have that structure in place. It's real hard to add these things on. And so I can, I can also let you know about where my office, I anticipate it moving in the future as far as any additional lawyers and things like that that we need. I'm probably somewhat responsible for the 20% reduction in my staff. And that wasn't by accident. You know, I went through and I did a lot of efficiency studies and whatnot, and we were able to reduce where we were able to. That being said, you know, we're running about 3,000 cases a year of misdemeanors, so that's gonna average somewhere around 1,500, excuse me, 1,500 cases per year in each of the county courts. Now, one may do more than the other, but on average, that's a lot, that's a lot of cases. So I anticipate, at some point, we will need a county court, an additional county court. What I would need in reflection of that, just probably be two lawyers for that court and one court secretary. That being said, we have existing space within our own office. We used to have the old paper files, and those took up a significant amount of space, not only in our office, but in the district attorney's office as well. I worked up there for about five years. We've got these strange-looking rolling carts or these rolling apparatuses, for lack of a better term, that we place all the files in. Those are pretty much empty at this point. So basically, taking the racks out, throwing up a few walls for two lawyer offices, and I don't even know that we would need the secretarial spot, because we've got some additional spots vacant right now for some of the folks that I'd adjusted and we'd let go. And so, you know, we're here to help. We have existing space. We can add a couple of offices too, but we'd also be willing to move across the street, not only temporarily, but permanently, because I think, you know, moving these offices back and forth obviously creates some disruption within those offices, and we'd be wanting to keep that at a minimum, as well as the health issues, you know, anytime you're knocking down part of a building, there's obviously gonna be some health issues there with the folks that existing that stay there as well. So, that's all I had. I just wanted to give you all kinda my input on it and answer any questions that you all may have.
Earl, thank you. Commissioners, we'll start at the right. Again, Commissioner Nettles.
No, thanks for coming over and sharing that insight, and thanks for carving up your space so that y'all can continue to grow within it.
Sure.
Ditto, and thanks again for reiterating. I think that the point of all the courts being in one building, for the multiple reasons discussed today, is important to keep in mind. Thank you for bringing that up.
Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Watson.
No, thank you for coming.
Okay.
Earl, thank you so much.
You bet.
Batting cleanup. The District Attorney Jarvis Parsons.
As usual. Thank y'all. I wanna thank y'all just for having this, and thank Trevor as well, kind of working with me through this whole process. I've been in office long enough to, I was here pre-median, which is a demarcating line here. So I think the overall theme is, the fourth floor on, in the 101 building, doesn't really concern our effort, except for this global kind of theme, which we're talking about, is investment. And what we should be doing now versus what we should be doing later. And what I have learned, being here, but just in life, is that normally, you're gonna pay either now or later, it's usually gonna be more expensive later when you do that. That's normal, but I will leave that to y'all, to the commissioners. In terms of the 101 building, just from my perspective, we found out, kinda by accident, back before the medians, there was a question as to whether or not we would be moving to the 101 building, and I asked a question of, would there be a, at the time, I know it's a different name now, but we called it a skybridge, to be able to move back and forth. And so, let me put a little bit of meat on the bones. I've had an employee who was run over in the, in the street on East 26, crossing between the parking garage and the courthouse, and lost her sense of smell for at least six to eight months, was pretty badly injured. So, safety was a huge concern, and that's when I said, if there's not that, I have people moving back and forth all the time, and we have wrecks all the time at William J. Bryan in Texas. And so that is not a safe spot for my lawyers to be moving back and forth, the amount of times that we are gonna be in the courthouse. Now I see that we're gonna be having a safe passageway, so I think that's good for the people that are gonna be moving over there. In terms of the DA's office, I think that there's a couple of things, and so my view is a little bit nuanced. So just let me build the clock before I tell you what time it is. One, for the next five or so years, five or so years, we can handle the space that we're in if we were to take where the Attorney General's Office space is. That'll give us enough growth to be able to move and be well. The skybridge or the safe passageway is gonna take out part of our office. Working with Trevor and the project managers, we're able to gain the old 361st space, that'll, almost like a one-for-one swap. And so to add for growth, which is gonna be inevitable, that space where the Attorney General's Office would work for us, and we would be fine, we'd be fat and happy, we'd be good to go. If we're talking about investing long-term, and talking about going over to the adult probation building, then having that building and the first floors, the first and the third floor, works well for the next 30 to 40 years. We would not have to expand at that point in time. If we were to invest in it and redesign it, to where I make it victim-friendly, right now, it is set up for probationers doing high-risk year analysis. That is not the right place to have victims of child abuse and crime be in those particular areas. So it would need to be redesigned, been working with the project managers to help us in that effort. That would be great. The issues about safety are already reality for us, because when we're talking about defense attorneys moving buildings, as Judge Hillburn talked about, our evidence is two blocks away behind La Familia. And so we have guns and drugs and things like that crossing major highways in Brazos County, every single time we have a trial, which is a lot. And so I think that's a reality for us, allowing us in that particular space in adult probation, long-term allows us to have everything under one roof.
May I stop you there? That was my one question that we hadn't touched on, that came up in this court many times, is evidence, and where it is, and how it needs, it doesn't need to be moved in about the county.
So we have, so our role is a little bit different than the county attorneys in terms of, while they have more volumes of cases, our cases have many times more evidence, more digital evidence, and also more physical evidence, because we're dealing with more crimes of violence. And things that, a good example is, the last trial I had, had about 300 different pieces of evidence, and we culled that down a lot. And that was just to admit into trial, not all the evidence that was actually, that we were storing at the time, that's just in our office, that comes from the police department. So, having that all under one roof, if we are thinking about investment, so the philosophy is, if we're looking to just save right now, then the status quo, staying where we are, makes sense to do that. If we're looking about investing over a 20, 30-year term, then if we're moving to the adult probation building, that gives us the space to be able to build out the first floor, to put the evidence section there. We're also building our own experts in terms of cellphone analysis, things like that, so they can run cellphones and computers in that particular area where we're not paying thousands of dollars out to places in Austin and out of state to bring in analysts here. So we're building those experts right now for a lower cost than we would be if we're paying them from out of state. But that's, that's one of the things I think is super important to look at. The other thing I would think about, and make sure that we understand, it is not necessarily on all fours, what we're talking about right here, but it is very, very important. When we talk about new courts, it is imperative, it is imperative with the explosion of digital evidence. I am old enough and gray enough and bald enough to remember when we had a file, and we could go in and try a case, we have trial set on Friday, and we'd have final pre-trial, and we'd figure out what's going on, and we'd get, we'd have an in-car video, we may have a confession, and we have an offense report. The amount of digital evidence that prosecutors deal with now is basically 10 times that, if not 100 times that. I think the last time I came and spoke, I talked about the fact that we are now looking at, right now, in our digital evidence storage, over 3 million pieces of digital evidence. That's not physical evidence, digital evidence. So I'm building the clock to tell you what time it is right now. If we increase the courts, you are going to have to increase the staff at the district attorney's office and at the county attorney's offices. Because what we are dealing with is because of this new era of digital evidence and the amount of evidence and the requirements on prosecutors, you're dealing with something called burnout. And so there are a lot of prosecutors who are leaving the field because the work is insane. It is crazy. And give you a good example, there are limits on how many terms a defense attorney, like a public defender, how many cases they can have for TIDC guidelines. Our lawyers average two to three times those number of felonies, not misdemeanors, felonies. So there are many times we are taking young people, and it is a lot easier to do something different, but they are here because they love it, they love the job, and they love protecting the citizens of Brazos County. So it is super important, as we build, to make, when we are investing, to make sure that we're making space and making room, not just in our hearts, but in our wallets, to budget new people, because that burden, it's easy, it's easier for them to go somewhere else, and those cases don't go anywhere else. So just remember that, when we're talking about, when we're increasing these courts, the DA's office is gonna have to have staff to make those changes happen. So, like I said, my position is nuanced. We can stay where we are. We love our space, we love our windows, we love being in the courthouse. We can do that for five years, and we'd be great with a little bit of the Attorney General's Office. Or if you invest, just remember that we can't just do it on a shoestring budget. So that's my thought. If you have any questions, I'm good to go.
Jarvis, thank you so much. Commissioner Nettles.
No questions. Well, okay.
Maybe a question.
Maybe a question. Not fiscal need, but storage of all this digital evidence, what kind of capacity do you need for that?
So right now, for digital evidence, we are working with Axon. We have good storage right now. We have just, we have, we're talking right now with them about expanding the role of Axon to help us move through the evidence faster, but our digital storage is fine. The problem with prosecutors is that you have to go through it all. So we have a continuing duty to give over evidence that's good for a defendant, that could be good for a defendant, to the prosecution, and it is hard, I don't know if this is being filmed or not, sometimes, and I think Judge Hillburn would agree with me, it is hard to get the evidence from the police departments over to us. So, police officers are very, very good at law enforcement. They may not be good at computer management. And so we are constantly getting increases of evidence all the time, as well as cellphones, which are huge amounts of space on digital side. So we have the space, the issue is making sure we have the ability and the people to go through that evidence.
Does it have to be climate-controlled?
Some of the, the physical, some of the physical evidence has to be cloud-controlled, so right now we have things like refrigerators and things like that. The, the digital evidence storage is cloud-based, so we are good, and we have a contract with Axon that is handling, handling that. And we try to work with them. For example, I'm going to Arizona to talk to their lead people, to talk to them about ways that we can make that process smoother. Our cellphone analyst is in a working board to help, because we are helping them do webinars. They've come down on prices for us here at the county, so we're willing to do that, to try to make it as cheap as possible.
And how secure is that? Wouldn't your attorneys are working tirelessly to figure out how to pull all that evidence out of the cloud and going back and forth?
It is, we haven't had.
That's a secure issue.
That, that's secure. We haven't had any issues concerning that. The main things that we have to do is we basically, when you, police are now getting information from a lot of different places, videos and things like that, making that information succinct for jury, but also going through that information. So we've basically created out of whole cloth cellphone and computer analysts. We've sent them to school. We've invested in them to be able to, to enhance our prosecution unit and basically to look at the evidence that, that's coming in. Because many people, I mean, if you, if you remember life before cell phones, it is a whole different world as opposed to people who've grown up with them. So we've invested younger, people who actually have hair are looking at our cell phones now. And they are, they're, they're doing a very, very good job.
So do you have, when you're doing that, do y'all have to be in a secure? I mean, they have to, you know, it's like not, you have to be in a secure.
A secure, secure environment. And that's, yes and no. It's a place where that is quiet and it's kind of walled off. You can't be doing that type of work around a whole bunch of different people because you can't get, lose focus. Now, some of the things we do deal with are sensitive. So we're dealing with, we deal with things like child pornography. So we can't just send those things out. So those things are very sensitive. We don't just put those out on the big screens for everybody to view and see. So in that, in that area, yes, it has to be secure.
Commissioner Condala.
No comment, no questions. Been covered. Thank you. Appreciate you, Mr. Parsons.
Commissioner Brown.
Nothing. Thank you, Jarvis.
Commissioner Watson.
I never stay in, I never stay in my place, number four. I just jump in.
So you're happy?
Well, it's like a follow-up. Well, you know, if he says something and somebody asks a question, I do a follow-up. Maybe I should be an attorney.
Great idea.
If they get a new court, I'll come, I'll come looking. Thank y'all.
Jarvis is hiring.
I appreciate y'all.
Jarvis, thank you for taking the time. Earl, thank you. David, thank you for being here. Trevor.
Yes, sir. That's, that's all I had to present.
Is there anybody else that we need to pull up? Is anybody, excuse me, do any department heads, anybody of the court system, financial, budget, audit?
IT.
This workshop has been very helpful, I hope. Commissioners, I would love to hear from you, your thoughts. Or if you individually would like to call anybody up in the audience to ask any further questions, the time is now, correct?
This is it? Will be available on the county YouTube for public to be able to see it? Yeah.
Commissioner Nettles.
No questions.
Commissioner Condala.
None.
Commissioner Brown.
None.
Commissioner Watson.
No, sir.
Well then, Trevor, thank you for taking the time to put that together for us.
Awesome job.
Workshops are a thing of the future as well for this court. We thank you for your participation today, all the departments, judge, both the district and county attorney.
I did have something I was going to say.
And Commissioner Condra has a thought, has been triggered. Please.
Thank you for the workshop. I think this is, you know, as the, as the county wants to embrace transparency in all that we do, I think workshops like this where you hear from people, particularly in the judicial system, a lot of people at home and really even here, don't always hear from the judicial representatives of the county, those that are carrying the judicial system forward, make sure it's operating and what their needs might look like in the future. So, you know, we hear from Trevor, you hear from us, you hear from staff. Thank y'all for coming. Thanks for putting this together where we could all hear these things together. I hope that folks who have questions about it will watch this workshop from home. It's, it's, it's good information. But again, I, I love the idea that more workshops where people at home can see the decisions being made and they're not just on a Tuesday morning watching a vote and some comments on a Tuesday morning. So good job on that. I'd love to see more of these.
And I will thank you all for asking the tough questions, wanting to know what we're doing, where we're headed. Because I think the point was brought up multiple times. Previous court, previous court, previous court. Three of us, well, two of y'all got here in January, one of us got here late. So we are adapting and moving quickly, but this is a growing community. I will say this, what makes America, America is the judicial system. The judicial system is also a big part of what we do that we don't have a lot of say and the legislature dictates what we need to do. And we are a growing community and we are blessed with great attorneys and judges working for the county and this judicial system. So it was our pleasure to have the workshop. Thank you for taking the time. Thank you for being here. It is now 11:05 and the workshop on the 101, fourth floor is concluded and we are adjourned.